All right, we're running a little late, but welcome this evening to the Board of Selectmen meeting for December 19, 2016. Let's see, four, we'll jump around a little bit on the agenda, the signing of the warrant.
I'll move.
Seconded.
That's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is approval of the December 5th meeting minutes.
Motion.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. All right, as we pay attention to the door and wait for our invited guests, I'll jump to Town Administrator's report. Rick, why don't you go over that with us?
Thank you, yes. First thing, I'd like to provide an update on the Community Compact specifically as to IT. On December 6, 2016, we submitted a scope of work and cost estimate to upgrade our town website to Pam Kocher, Director of Special Initiatives of the Division of Local Services. Today, I participated in a conference call with Michael Hamel, Director of the Office of Municipal and School Technology, and Amelia Presenti, Municipal Technology Analyst, also from that office. We reviewed the scope and projected costs to upgrade the town website. They then reviewed our project with Pam Kocher, and she then informed me just a couple of hours ago, the town will be awarded a grant from the Executive Office for Administration and Finance in the amount of $12,500 for our website upgrade to enhance citizen engagement through the Community Compact. Upon execution of the contract, the town will receive 70 percent, 75 percent of the total grant amount, with the other 25 percent to be received upon completion of the project. The project has an estimated completion date requirement of December 31, 2017. I want to thank, obviously, Andy and Zach, who played a tremendous role in securing that grant. Just a reminder that Town Hall will be closed on Monday, December 26, the day after Christmas, and on Monday, January 2, 2017, the day after New Year. We will be open until 5:00 PM on Friday, December 23, and Friday, December 30, 2016. I want to thank the Facilities Director, Carlos Benjamin, members of the Fire Department, Highway Surveyor Scott Christofouli, and members of the Highway Department for putting up the Christmas banners and wreaths along Main Street. Their efforts are most appreciated. Two more updates, one on the issue regarding the Main Street crosswalk. The Highway Surveyor, Police Chief, and Town Engineer have reviewed the potential location for a crosswalk on Main Street. They also requested a consultant visit the area to help determine the best location for the crosswalk as to safety and ADA compliance. The consultant is recommending the best location to be at the north corner of Franklin Street at Main Street to Draper Park. This will eliminate the need to remove three parking spaces and relocation of a catch pension for a shorter, safer crosswalk. Due to the time of the year, the project will most likely be reviewed and completed in the spring. And finally, an update on the Archer Rubber demolition. I'm informed by Deputy Fire Chief Mark Nelson that a schedule for the demolition has been prepared. Interior abatement of asbestos should be completed by the end of this week. The anticipated completion date for the demolition is mid-February of 2017. The owners have agreed to have a security company on-site during all hours when work is not being performed, and I will keep the board updated as to the process as it progresses. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, that's a lot. So, for anybody who's unclear about the amount of activity that the Town Administrator, Building Inspector, Scott Christofouli, Highway, Police, Fire, everybody, and working together, there was a great example of what sounded like a very small list and a lot of great things happening. First of all, I want to commend Rick and the team, Finance Director, IT Director Andy, and they, what great work and how fast it was that you put that together in terms of the Community Compact. Our IT and website is in need of upgrade for certain, and that grant of $12,500 certainly helps offset our taxpayer cost to that, and it's appreciated, all the work that you did working with the state and helping us get that Community Compact going. You know, sometimes the Board of Selectmen members can think up things, but we know where the real work's being done. It's being worked, being done at your levels for the various grants and things that happen. So, good news, and I just wanted to say, from the behalf of the board, thank you. The wreaths look great. I don't want to go through all the line items that you mentioned, but good news and a lot of things happening.
Thank you.
Now, I want to jump back to the original first item on the agenda. So, I'd like to call forward the Chief of Police, Dispatcher Lisa Truss, and Kim St. Armand, Dispatcher Kim St. Armand. Chief? Yeah, if you could, Chief. As a result of a memo the Board of Selectmen received recently about some good news that happened, it asked the chief to come forward so that we might recognize a couple of dispatchers who work very hard every day, and this is just one example of what a lot of dispatchers are doing in many towns around the Commonwealth, but more specifically, some good news that happened. And Milford, and Chief, I'll let you describe the situation scenario.
I think this event is indicative of, you know, the intervention of professionals who have been trained well, the difference that they can truly make. On Sunday, December 4, Dispatcher Lisa Truss has received a 911 emergency call for a nine-year-old girl who was in distress. While gathering information from the parents so that she could dispatch police EMS fire rescue, the child stopped breathing. During the ensuing nine and a half minutes, Dispatcher Truss has took command of the situation, calming the parents as best she could, and getting them to take positive actions to assist their daughter. She was able to instruct them in CPR, reviving their daughter's breathing, assist them in clearing her airway and mouth, provide treatment through a nebulizer, and ensuring access for the first responders who were on the way. While Dispatcher Truss was working with the family over the telephone, Dispatcher Kim St. Armand took control of dispatching police fire EMS, updating them with information from Dispatcher Truss and the family, and also providing information back through Dispatcher Truss to the family so that they would know when those services were arriving at the home and the best way to access to help their daughter. The nine-year-old was transported to the hospital for treatment by the Milford Fire Department and Community Ambulance, and I'm pleased to let you know that the family has informed me that she is doing very well. In fact, she's here with us this evening. I believe that the actions of both of these dispatches were exceptional and worthy of really great praise, for there's no doubt that this young girl's life was saved by her parents because of the professional intervention of Dispatcher Truss and the assistance of Dispatcher Kim St. Armand in getting those vital services there when they were in need. And I think this is, as you said, another example of, you know, Milford invests hours of training far beyond those required by the state, and the payoffs are making a difference for families in this community each and every day. They deal with people that are in crisis, people that, you know, when your time of need is your time of need, you want the help to be there instantaneously and make a difference, and they do every single day. With us tonight, for the board's pleasure, is Mona Wallace, who is the Director of Statewide Training for 911. This particular event jumped out at her. She contacted me when she heard about it from a coworker who knows the family, and Mona said, "These are the examples we're looking for," because it really shows what a difference professionals like these two ladies make every day. And then also with us is the Sweeney family, Mr. and Mrs. Sweeney, and their daughter, who happened to be the individual who was in need of care. And, you know, as a parent and as a member of this community, if I pick up the telephone, these are the services that I would want, and I was just impressed. I actually listened to the audiotape, and I have to tell you, it's impressive, the work that they did at a time of crisis, and I think that the Sweeneys will say the same thing to you, and if the board would afford them the opportunity, they would like to speak to you.
We would love to hear from the Sweeneys. Please, would you like to come forward? We want to get it on the microphone. Please come forward. Why don't you all come on?
We're all coming up.
Oh, good.
We get all the Sweeneys today. Please, we're you.
Oh, goodness, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
So happy everything works out so well.
Me too. I don't know who I was talking to, but oh my God.
Oh, I yelled at you, I'm sorry.
She did, she yelled.
I yelled at you.
Yeah, and I yelled at you. We needed it, but thank you.
You did.
You did a fantastic job, and you, you really helped us do what we needed to do, you know. And, you know, we couldn't have been happier with the results.
I killed because I was a mom, so, such a wuss.
Take it through the story and have tears.
It was very, very hard for us, but honestly, you guys kept us going.
Good.
You kept us headstrong, because you know, I was like, "Ah!" But you did exactly what I needed you to do. If you didn't do that, the outcome could have been so much different, because I would not have been listening to you. So, I appreciate it.
I wouldn't be listening to me either, so don't worry. I know I wouldn't.
I had the opportunity to listen to the 911 tape, and in the midst of chaos, a chaos that's understandable when somebody's child is in breathing and in distress. I have to tell you, I agree with you, the professionalism that we have in our dispatch. This is today, and this is one instance. There have been many others that the chief has brought to us, brought to our attention. But thankfully, your daughter's with us today, and your family is here to smile, and you get to be part of growing up and a lot of other things that could have been a challenge otherwise. And so, you know, on behalf of the board, I'm going to ask the board members to also give their comments, but on behalf of the board, I just want to thank the chief for his leadership, the dedication of the dispatchers, and commitment to training, because without that training, it's just another, you're just another participant in chaos. You know what to do, you did it, and you did it well. It's sufficient that these folks were able to do what they needed to do and take your direction. You took control of the situation, and we thank you. We thank you as a community, and I know this family thanks you, they've already said that. So, I'll ask the board members, Brian, any comments or thoughts?
Yeah, no, thank you very much. This is a wonderful event for us to have, particularly at this time of the year. You know, it brings me back to the time when the chief and the fire chief came forward and asked this board to support, you know, full-time professional dispatch, and it wasn't unanimous support. There were pockets in the town that we had to advocate for because we felt it was the right thing to do, and thankfully, we did ultimately get support, and now you can see the fruits of that effort. And this isn't the first time that we've had dispatchers in for doing just a miraculous job. So, you know, to be part of that decision several years ago, I'm very proud, and I'm very proud and happy that you're carrying forth the great work that you are, just to prove how responsible that decision is. To have that coordination with police, fire, and medical, to have the professionalism at that very crucial time is just invaluable, and you really can't put a price tag on it. But in Milford, you know, we certainly value that, we value the work that you do, and I think all of the residents, certainly the Sweeney family, values it as well. So, great job, and just want to commend you so much for the professionalism that you showed.
Thank you, Brian.
Well, thank you, Bill. Yeah, obviously, I agree and echo my colleagues' comments, and, you know, I didn't hear the call, I read the transcript, and obviously, I read it in the newspaper, and obviously, when you come here and you see all the participants and your beautiful little daughter here, it certainly changes things. So, you know, it's a, it was a good news story, and now we actually get to experience some of the reality of it. Thank you, ladies. You two are both very good ladies and obviously very good dispatchers, so we're lucky to have you. Thank you, Chief, thank you, Deputy Chief, and I'm really glad the family could come down. That I didn't know, and I certainly didn't expect, but I'm glad you're here. Thank you very much.
You know, some of the things that were said earlier, I just want to echo. Oftentimes, the members of the Board of Selectmen are making what I call spreadsheet decisions, decisions that are going to show on balance sheets with revenue and cost projections. And I've tried to instill in folks that you're not always going to find the benefit on a balance sheet, right? And you're not always going to see it. Everything is a cost in municipalities, everything is a hard decision, but this is one of the easiest decisions I can support, and that's the combined dispatch and the work and the training that the chief provides to his folks and the dispatchers. And I just want to echo that and say, you know, how much was that worth? You know, if it's somebody you love, your grandchild, your child, your mother, your father, this is very personal, and the intent here was to make it personal, just so that we understand that they're real people, and you can read it in the newspaper, or we can see the folks' faces today, and it means a lot to us. So, with that said, Chief, you have a couple of citations I know, oh, go ahead. So, I'd like to read from a couple of citations. The Town of Milford citation, "Be it known that the Board of Selectmen hereby offer the congratulations to Kim St. Armand in recognition of your swift, decisive, heroic action on December 4, 2016, which resulted in the prevention of a tragedy. On behalf of the people of Milford, the Selectmen extend their very best wishes and express the hope of good, future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, and this is signed by myself, my colleagues Brian Murray and William Kincaid." I'm going to present this to you in a moment, and we didn't leave out Lisa. Again, on the Town of Milford, Massachusetts citation, "Be it known that the Board of Selectmen hereby offer their congratulations to Lisa Truss in recognition of your swift, decisive, heroic action on December 4, 2016, which resulted in prevention of a tragedy." On behalf of the people, on behalf of the people of Milford, the Selectmen would like to extend their very best wishes, express their hope for good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, and again, signed by myself and the members of the Board of Selectmen. You have two as well, Chief?
I actually have four, from the department and from State 911. Massachusetts State 911 Department recognizes Dispatcher Lisa Truss. December 4, 2016, Dispatcher Truss has answered a 911 call. The Milford Police Department, your frantic father, who's reporting that his nine-year-old daughter is having an asthma attack and is unconscious. Dispatcher Truss has experienced training that it was possible for her to take control of the call, calming the father, providing him with pre-arrival medical instructions, stabilizing the child until emergency medical staff was on the scene. And that's Frank Bosniak, the Executive Director of Massachusetts 911. For Dispatcher Kim St. Armand, on December 4, 2016, Dispatcher Kim St. Armand silently monitored a 911 call for a nine-year-old child having an asthma attack, who was reported being unconscious. Dispatcher St. Armand supported the efforts of dispatcher Truss by immediately dispatching emergency medical services to the scene and providing patient updates prior to their arrival. Dispatcher St. Armand's experience and training made it possible for her to ensure that all necessary units were informed and dispatched expeditiously. And the two citations from the Milford Police Department are essentially the same as the ones from the state, so, and they speak to your professional, outstanding actions in safely telecommunicating and helping the family that was in distress, and just commending you, and I just want to echo, you know, what you said, Mr. Chairman, you can't measure this on a balance sheet, you measure it in the living room. That's where these events occur, that's who we're helping, you know, and we have with us here tonight a future school nurse.
There you go.
So, the benefits are wide and far for us, because not only did we help her, we have a future employee. So, we're in pretty good shape, being in the hands of our young friend here.
And as I explained to Mr. Sweeney, Chief, and as these events pop up, they're extremely personal to me, because, as I said, we're part of a small group. I know personally, from personal situation, where dispatch and police officers responded and cleared my grandson's airway, I know a little bit about how you're feeling tonight, and we're all very, very thankful that the outcome is the way it happened. Thank you. Let me present these. Thank you. Great work. Keep doing it.
Can I just say one thing? I always say in the dispatch center, we all have our strengths and we all have our weaknesses. She is the hero. She really was, because if I had picked up the call that day, I would have passed it to her. She's phenomenal with CPR, she's phenomenal with children, she's just phenomenal. She really is. We all have our strengths and weaknesses, but she was the hero that day. She really was.
I agree, I heard that 911, I agree.
She really, really was, so I thank you for everything.
Thank you.
But she was the absolute hero that day. She was unbelievable, I would have passed that call to her if it came to me, I would have. She was phenomenal. I'm so proud of you.
I hate you.
I trained her, I trained her!
You trained her to pass the call to her.
I trained her! And I would have passed that call to her, she was phenomenal. You really were. You really were.
Now, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to call a five-minute recess, so that the board members, all of us, can step out, take some photographs with the citation and the family and the dispatchers, and hopefully, it's something folks can remember why we did what we do and why they do what they do.
I'm so proud of her. She is so good. She really was. You were.
I know.
You were the hero.
You're killing me.
She was. She was.
Thank you.
What's your name, honey? Maddie? Maddie? I love it. Thank you.
I got a fag.
I gotta say.
All right, thank you. We're returning after the presentation of the citations for our dispatchers and taking of some pictures. A great event. Felt good. Felt good this evening. Good outcome. With that said, we're going to jump to invitation to speak. Is there a member of the public here that would like to speak? All right. Mr. Wheelock? Mr. Wheelock, as I said earlier, we've got quite a long agenda and certainly a long executive session, so I'm gonna give you a couple of minutes and then I'm gonna ask you that if there's something you think might take longer, I'll give you the choice if you'd like to return at a future meeting.
Great. Hopefully you feel like I've always been respectful of your time. I think I usually try to be pretty concise.
No, no, you are.
So I will attempt to be as concise as I usually am.
You could take a couple of minutes, just describe the problem and then, or the challenge, or whatever it is that you'd like to bring up this evening.
Terrific. I'd like to say that I'm appreciative of the daily hard work that gets done here at Town Hall, week after week, all year long. It is possible to both be, recognize the good work that gets done at Town Hall and still want to raise issues that deserve to be aired. I would not feel the need to come here so often if other people spoke every once in a while or if there was actual editorials in a local media source or letters to the editor in any local media source. Town Hall operates pretty well isolated. Technically, it's all open-meeting stuff and absolutely, I can't deny that. But outside of Town Hall, there's not a lot of scrutiny of Town Hall. So that's how I see it anyhow.
You certainly understand your opinion. That's why we invite you to share it.
Right. Maybe someday, other people will speak up about things that are on their mind or some media things will work in a way that I think is more useful. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the meeting that was held by the State Department of Public Health at Milford Regional Medical Center last Thursday. The meeting started off with a brief matter-of-fact statement from the man leading the meeting that said that he had not received any communications from any state rep or other officials. If that's true, it's disappointing from Fernandez and Fatman. It's even more disappointing from Town Hall and the selectmen here in Milford. From what I can tell, the town of Milford has been accommodating and deferential to the Milford Regional Medical Center on more issues than you need to be reminded about. To think that the way that Milford Regional Medical Center says "thank you for all of that generous treatment" is to propose the elimination...
Mr. Wheelock, I'm gonna ask you that if there's a possibility that anything that you might say going forward has the potential to impugn the reputation of somebody who's not here, including representatives of the Milford Hospital, that I'd ask you to stop. I may need to cut you off. You're bordering an area where...
I find that hard to believe. I'd like to continue now.
Well, I'll let you continue as the chairman of this board, but I'm gonna tell you, if you delve into an area where you impugn the reputation or the organization of people who are entitled to be present while you assail, I just want to let you know I will cut you off.
Goodness gracious. Holy smokes.
Okay. You've been warned.
Wow. All right. To think that the way that Milford Regional Medical Center says "thank you for that deferential treatment" would be the elimination of the pediatric ward and to have Milford kids use the ER or have to seek extended treatment at hospitals in Worcester or Boston and the immense inconvenience to the family of those kids leaves some people in Milford thinking that Town Hall or the selectmen or maybe their surrogates at least should have spoken in opposition to Milford Regional Medical Center's proposed elimination of the pediatric ward. When an organization that has benefited so much from this community proposes cutting services to the vulnerable kids of this area, it makes some people question whether it is time to re-access their nonprofit status or at least how quick to be accommodating to the hospital Town Hall has been. I hope that didn't impugn anybody.
No, I'm wondering how... Actually, I'm not wondering. I'm gonna let it go because how accommodating this board or this Town Hall has been to the...
A list of ADA-compliant problems that Town Hall chose to not pursue.
Okay, Mr. Wheelock.
Upzone and flip in the whole area.
You've crossed the line, so I'm gonna ask you to wrap up your comments.
I did. I did.
Okay, you're done? All right. Thank you for sharing.
You don't remember anything?
Thank you for sharing your comments. We're not gonna get into that space. The individuals whose job it is to govern and inspect are not here, not present. You're not gonna impugn the reputation of those individuals.
I'm not gonna speak in vague generalities for you.
Well, the generalities you're talking about have the potential to impugn people's reputation. I'm not gonna let it happen. If you'd like to schedule with the town administrator, I already offered you the opportunity to speak with town council. You've not taken up that opportunity. But if you would like to talk with the town administrator about any shortcomings that you see in any department within Town Hall, I'd ask you to meet with him. I'd ask you to schedule a meeting with this board.
I prefer to speak in public on this issue.
Hold on. And you can speak, and you can speak in public, but when those members are present. I'm not gonna let you throw out comments that broadly assail people's job performance or work function. So you can think what you want. You can have your opinion. You've shared it, and I thank you very much for that.
All right.
All right, next we have public hearings, scheduled appointments. We have IT manager regarding an IT update. So with that, we'll turn that over to Andy. Andy DiOrio, the manager of IT for the town. Specifically, Town Hall.
That is correct. I just wanna thank this board and Finance Committee and all the other boards for coming behind the IT department, helping us come together. Gotta personally thank Rick Vilani, our town administrator, Zach Taylor, our finance director, my technician, Dan Fornier, for day-to-day operations, and Worldban, our consultants, for helping us along with a lot of our projects, which I'll briefly go over tonight.
All right.
An overview of what we'll talk about tonight. Projects, Veronis, the website, and what's going on beyond. In the year of 2016, we had about 365 HealthDex tickets were actually logged. This is probably closer to 400 or 400-plus of things that probably didn't get logged or things that have been logged before this meeting. The town is currently running 17 virtual servers. Eleven of them are running here at the Town Hall and six are across the COA, the DPW, and the youth center. All our backups are run nightly, so everything is backed up. And we have approximately about 95 desktops all running, primarily Dell, running either Windows 7, 8, or 10. And the ones that, the one XP machine is being replaced this month, this week, I should say. As you heard, we did join the Community Compact and today we had secure funding for our website, which I'll go over later in these slides. We've also joined the Massachusetts Government Information Systems Association, which is comprised of 60 area towns, and they meet every so often to go over issues within local IT government. And we also joined the Interactive Collaborative Exchange. It was created and hosted by the City of Lowell IT Department. It's mainly for people who procure IT or have anything to do with the IT. And they have very informative forums, which I've been on and got some information on. Here at the Town Hall, we did complete our server redundancy. We now have a secondary server. That was completed on 10/21 of this year. We've also upgraded our memory in the main server. We added 32 more gigs of memory, so right now we have 128 gigs overall. That was completed on 10/21 as well this year. We've also added a second remote desktop server, which houses our BudgetSense, Data National, and everything to decrease the load that the primary has been dealing with. We completed that on 12/11 of this year. We are going to be completing an upgrade to our SonicWall and add a backup. We hope to have that completed by January 15 of 2017. We've just completed our Veronis trial, which was completed 11/1 of this year. Yes. I forgot to give you those. That's just a brief summary of our projects that were part of that three-year plan. They're not mentioned in this slide, but they're there for your information. And our Data National migration, we hope to have that wrapped up later this week. The senior center is now converted over to the town phone system. That was completed last month on the 14th. We've also replaced the network switch there. So they've gone from an aging Netgear to a more modern Cisco switch that was completed last month on the 26th. We replaced their SonicWall, which was aging as well, on 11/26. And we added wireless installation like we have here at the Town Hall. There are two networks, one for the admin, one for the public. The public one is, has no password, so anyone from the town can go in and enjoy internet access. And as I mentioned, we are replacing that one XP machine, and that should be done later this week. My technician has that scheduled. The highway department, we didn't have much there. We were replacing two desktops. But talking with Scott and Janice there, it came to an agreement that the foreman should have a laptop so he can take out and out and about when he's going to job sites. I came up with a rugged laptop, not just like the ones that the police and the fire would have in their vehicles as well. The one in the garage would, will be replaced with one that we have in our IT office, which is a lot newer than the one they have now. The youth center, everything there has been completed. All desktops, seven desktops, one laptop, and 10 monitors have been purchased. All Dell, they were, this was completed on 9/7 of this year. All the network backbone, the SonicWall, which is our firewall, server installation, all completed in September. We also completed the installation of the backup system there, also in September. And they also have wireless access there. Again, two networks, one for the admin side and one for the public. Public, just like here and at the senior center, is open to anyone there. There's no password.
Andy, real quick, on the top bullet, desktop monitor and purchase. Seven desktops, one laptop, 10 monitors were purchased. Were they also installed?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so they were purchased and installed. Okay.
They were purchased before September
Okay.
and installed in September.
Thank you.
Our townwide projects, we're now compliant. We just upped our Microsoft Server License and Client Access. This is for our email and access to our remote desktop service. That was done in 10/14. Our desktop memory upgrade for anyone who is below eight gigs individual workstations, that was completed on 11/25. And this is still ongoing. Our inventory of IT equipment, which we are asset-tagging, all our IT equipment, just bought some more tags. And my technician found this program called Landsweeper, which he also has been using to inventory what is out there as well.
That's part of the asset management program? Identify assets. Okay.
Yes. This is, that is part of all that as well.
Yep.
As I mentioned earlier, we had Veronis come in here. We had this installed in August. It monitored all our file servers and our mail server. It focused on all our instruction data. Instruction data is any Word documents, PDFs, pictures, spreadsheets, and alike. The town had about 222,000 folders and 1.7 million files that they analyzed, over about 670 gigs of information. They looked at all our users and groups and active directory, which is about 270. They looked at our permissions. They looked at all the activity that was going, who was touching what files, you know, how many times, and content, which dealt with all our sensitive data, meaning credit cards, bank numbers, HIPAA information, and alike. And it also monitored, which is important, external threats, such as ransomware. And we know it's working because I got some false positives in which someone had connected an iPhone or an iPod and the temporary file was flagged as a ransomware. So it is working. And it gives us all nice little alerts of if things are going awry that we can quickly get to. As mentioned earlier, we are trying to revamp our website. We wanna get something that has easier navigation, central access to all town pages, not just the Town Hall departments, such as the library, police, fire. The ability to have boards, committees, department, and departments to manage information, have them to easily upload, so it's more accurate than we have now. And the big thing is to increase public participation and enhance our customer service by allowing our citizens to do stuff online, such as licenses and pay their tax bills and stuff like that, which we currently do, but not to the extent that we should be doing. So far, we've already met with virtual towns and schools. They focus mainly on government websites. Many of the area towns use their content management system. And if you go on some of them, just go out there, Medway and Franklin have used them, and they have quality websites. As mentioned, we did join the Community Compact and as Rick Vilani just stated earlier, we did secure $12,500 to help overset the cost of this. And before we do anything, we're going to sit down and listen to the town departments because this should be a collective effort to find something that we all can enjoy and be proud of. Along with this, this is where other links such as GovLive, which Zach and I have talked about and I have heard that the schools also wanna use Gov... Gov... ClearGov, yes, sorry about that. ClearGov. And through their meetings, they, towns have focused and put a link and a tab on their websites as well. And that's something we could do here, along with the next slide that I have, which is the Pension Technology Group, or PTG, is what our retirement board uses. And on 11/22, the retirement board approved of an employee self-service portal, which will allow all our members and retirees to log in and view at home all their information for their retirement. And that would save a trip going to the retirement office to print out stuff or look up stuff or do estimates. With this, they can do everything at home. It's safe and secure. Only administrators will have access to the overall site, which would be just the retirement department. Any changes would be approved by the retirement department. And when users log in, only their information will be there. So they won't be mismatched with anybody else. And if they did, were part of another retirement, such as another town, that would also show up here as well. For next year, we're looking into rewiring the Town Hall with CAP-6 cabling. If that comes to be, that would probably be a capital plan, which Rick and Zach and I will talk about if this is something feasible that we should do here for next year. We plan on replacing the DPW's firewall. The one they have now will be end-of-life. This will also be the first year of desktop replacements. We have about 14 that are at least five years or older. So we should be replacing those. Now that we have secured funding... Now that we have secured funding for the website, we're probably going to move that up and do some things in this year, in two thousand and seventeen, then waiting till next year because we have to get that done. We're also looking into moving off our current ticketing system, which we share at the school, so the town has their own. We're also continually developing of our security breach protocol, which Finance Director and the Town Treasurer and myself have been researching, and something that we should be doing. We did meet with Brad Rand, which was, he's the VP of IT Security for Unibank, and he gave us a lot of good ideas, and he was impressed of some of the stuff that we've actually done here in our network. And we're still in the planning discussion phases of an enterprise research program, such as Munis, to eliminate Data National, Budget Sense, and Patriot. For two thousand and nineteen...
Andy, that's a broader package that has all the bolt-on components instead of using a lot of different supplier software?
Absolutely.
Enterprise-wide.
Absolutely. They'll eliminate having one system for, you know, assessing, one system for tax collecting, and one system for the rest of the town.
That don't talk and...
That don't talk. Right now, you have to log into each individual. And finally, two thousand and nineteen, we'll start the second year of our desktop replacements. We'll start to look into cloud-based services such as file servers and our backups. Is it feasible to get them off our site and put them into the cloud? And this is where we'll start to implement that ERP. And hopefully, coinciding with the libraries' plan to replace their server equipment, have them finally join the town network. The Board has any questions or comments?
Yeah, have a seat. Come on up, Zach. I'm going to go to the members in a second. So the piece of paper that you provided us while you were talking, thank you, I appreciate this. What this does for the members of the Board and general public is it reminds us the types of things we talked about back in September, what we intended on doing. And basically, what it outlines is some of the work that's done. This is a work in progress. I've got some quick thoughts as we want to structure this document so that we could easily communicate it. Because three- and five-year plans are a work in progress and kind of rolling, there are things that are going to be commanding our attention two years from now that we haven't thought of today. New threats, new things that pop up in the IT space. So, you know, I would just, for our benefit, for your benefit, recommend within the table that you have, it's a good table, it's a good basis to work from, I would just add the date added. I would also put, rather than in the narrative, you have to write "completed", if you look at the first item as an example, I would put "completion date column".
Yeah, that's easy.
Yeah. And I'll go to the Board members. I have some questions, but I'll go to the Board members, but that was just a layout thing that's very minor, so it's not intended to be critical, it's constructive. Brian?
Yeah, no, I really don't have any questions. I think the work that you're doing through technology throughout Town Hall and central government is pretty evident. I think it's moving along very well, progressing, I think, better than probably intended. I'll be the last guy to try to tell you how to do something with technology, so just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. No, Zach, Andy, I think, one thing that I think a lot of us can be happy with is just showing what you've done this year is pretty impressive compared to what has been or supposed to be done in past years. So I think progress is being made, so I'm pretty impressed. And this has been what feedback I've been getting back, so it's nice to actually see it. A lot of things you're doing, it's funny, it must be the same time I'm very familiar with and doing things at my office, in my department, especially with the XP and bringing things up to date and the switches, and you're really making a lot of progress. And I want you to hear that from me and Zach. This is a really good thing. I just hope we can keep it going. I know there's a whole lot of other, you know, balls in your court, and hopefully, Andy, now you have help with Dan being here, that we can just keep plugging away, because this is a lot of progress.
It is. I think the team approach has been really, really key to the success here with Rick, Will, Ben, Andy, Dan, all coming together. We meet regularly, and I think it speaks for itself.
Absolutely. We've been able to complete everything for two thousand and seven in the first half of the year.
Oh, thank you, Rick, because this is impressive.
This is really good. So I'll leave it at that, but this is good progress.
Yeah, I did that because of the comments made by my colleagues. This is actually more than I had expected in the first six months of your work, Andy. You know, I'm really impressed with how easy you're making it in working with the user communities to work interactively and work collaboratively. And, you know, some of these things are going to sound minor, but it's tremendously helpful to them. So just a simple system, like integrating all the various town phone systems so that they can just dial the four-digit, connect. And I say that because I know there's a whole lot more that comes with the voice-over IP telephone system that comes with that being on the same system.
That was probably the hardest component.
Yeah, the training that's going to need to go on for the phone systems is incredible because the phone systems are computers. You know, you talked about a new help desk ticketing system. What would drive us to go to a new help desk ticketing system?
Just to get us off of, because we share the one with the schools and...
Yeah, but I look at that as inherently a good thing. That's why I picked up on what you said, so...
But for reporting and seeing what is just our data, it's very important. And there's a few programs out there that can give us some, you know, great reporting and just something that we can have as our own.
Was it that you're not be able, you're not easily able to differentiate between school-based service support and downtime and Town Hall, Library? You know, we've got to stop saying Town Hall, so that's why I'm going to go through the list. So it's Town Hall, Library, Youth Center, Town Highway Survey. Have I left anybody?
Senior Center and Youth Center.
And Youth Center.
Memorial Hall.
Okay.
That's one.
All right, so...
You know, it's, because being with the schools, they have their sort of customization. There's things that we would want to do, and it may not be as well.
Well, I would ask you to do this on the front end. I'm not going to interfere with the software choices that you make. I don't think they need to be made at this level. The only thing I'd ask you is to investigate enough help desk software and work with the school department because I think what you can do is I can get, I think you can get that differentiation in tickets and whose service is what service and still be on the same system.
Well, we could definitely do that. I've come from a background of having more robust programs in which you get better reporting, better make things granular.
It's not imperative.
It's not something, it's something that you look into.
I don't want to slow you down in doing it. The question is, can the school benefit from that system and everybody so that as employees transfer, as different things happen, and maybe they backfill on vacations, or maybe there's something else that's happening collaboratively between the school's IT and our IT that we don't have to be on separate systems unless we have to be, if that makes sense, right? If you're forced to do it, that's one thing. But if we can gain the benefit of collaboration, training, and whatnot, then makes sense.
All the systems that we have looked is, yes, the schools could join us if they so choose.
Okay. Well, it's working with the user community. Just consider them, because if we can have the same help desk, that'd be great.
Going on that too, I've had feedback that, especially on the town side, that logging tickets is, you know, hard for them.
Difficult.
It's a difficult endeavor with this help desk?
Seems like it should be a lot easier.
Should be a lot easier.
Okay. All right, that's a good example.
It should be a very simple process. So if it's not, that's an interesting comment, okay.
Okay, no, that's good feedback. You know, I think at some point, we should be sitting with Andy. We should be talking about, and I'm going to suggest that we structure it such that, Rick, we work with Jerry to figure out how it's executive session discussion, where we look at our external threats as it relates to IT, the type of information we store, how we block those threats and do it not in open session but in exec.
Yeah, we could definitely do something like that.
Because you're restricted from being able to talk about certain things in a general open meeting format, and there's reasons for that. We don't want to expose weaknesses in their system. And I say weakness, it's a relative term, right? They're robust, but there's always enhancements we can do. We should be looking at that and looking at that budget and hearing from you directly on what your needs are so that we can support that effort without having to have a lot of public discussion about that. And for the benefit of the public, I'm not talking about secret meetings. I'm talking about where their personal information or employees' personal information might be at some risk, and we want to plug those gaps and make our firewalls and our protections for that data more robust. And it's not something you talk about in open meeting.
Correct.
Okay. I know you started to get into that space, and the FinCom started to ask questions about that.
Absolutely.
How we assess that, how we identify it, how many alerts you get.
Do that in front of everyone.
No, 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 it gets awkward, so, you know, and I think you got the sense that when we brought you in that various members had different aspects of IT interest and concerns. That's always been one of mine, and as we read in the papers every day, larger corporations and more secure environments are being hacked every day. And I just want to make sure it's not our residents or our employees' bank accounts that are accessed as a result of some intrusion here. I know that's hard to do, but we'll continue to be diligent, and I know you are focused on it. Is there anything else that the Board would like to talk about? Is there anything you need to talk about? I think we need to talk about capital, what the next capital plan looks like and how we prioritize this.
Yes.
Another thing I'm going to ask you to consider in your capital plan for IT is how these, the members of this Board stay up to date on IT and are capable of getting access to things they need to. Some of the specialized programs that might exist, and some of them are not so specialized. Some of them are as simple as Microsoft. Not all the members and not all special employees are purchasing the most up-to-date versions of Microsoft or Outlook or some of the other tools that you may be using, but there may be others. There may be enterprise-wide things that we may have on laptops. We may get to a point for some Boards, because we may have to issue laptops. And I'm not sure when we cross that space. But I also want to make sure that our access to certain things doesn't create its own risk by possibly putting viruses into the system or whatnot. So we'll talk about that. Think about, because we're talking about a five-year capital plan, right? You've got three years mapped out. I wouldn't recommend you go too much further than that, because if you do a five-year capital plan, I know it's already obsolete as soon as you write it down. You can't possibly be five years out in the future knowing where the technology's coming from. So I appreciate it. Great work, great start. You hit the ground running.
Thank you.
If there's anything that you guys need, help keep the traction going, support, but we've got to look at that capital plan. And so, I would say, you know, you're going to be put in that situation again where FinCom is going to be needing information, looking for IT capital plans, and this Board should be reviewing it, making sure we understand your strategy and agree with that strategy. So I'm looking at mid-January, guys, to come in with a capital plan, okay? And don't, again, don't worry about a five-year IT capital plan, get the three-year, and we'll just keep rolling that.
Sounds good.
Anything you need?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Before he answers that, last meeting I asked about the status of where we are with ClearGov, and I know a number of towns are jumping onto that. So while they're here, and we have a captive audience, I'd like to know if there's a status update on that at all?
Since then, I've reached out to Chris Bullock, and they've given a presentation to the school. The school was very, very impressed.
I heard that, okay.
And I've talked to some of the school committee members, and I believe they're going to purchase it this month. So Chris had reached back out to me and suggested that if we were also to jump on board that they would give us a twenty percent discount on it. So it would be forty-eight-hundred rather than six-thousand per year. I did mention earlier that when we did build a budget, we didn't incorporate this because we didn't even know it existed at the time. And as you've seen, we did do a lot with our budget, so it is tight. However, I did mention that at the time of building the budget, we didn't realize what the salaries would come in at, so there is extra money available in the salaries and wage. But as you guys know, they'll take Town Meeting and/or thirty-three B transfers at the end of the year. So we're having an opportunity, if you want to move forward, we can. If you want to wait till next budget season, we can do that too.
Zach, let me respond to that real quick. One of the only questions I have before the final decision is made, whether we go to ClearGov or not, is whether there are sufficient communities, number of communities on it, using it, such that it provides a benchmark that's a legitimate benchmark. Because what I don't want is small fragments of information being used for benchmark when they're not legitimate, one-for-one comparisons.
Well, I don't think you have to actually have it purchased. It's, everything's driven basically for townwide, town side, I should say, through Schedule A, which is done through my office, so that data is submitted to the state. So all, every city and town is available, so it doesn't necessarily mean that you, a town has to be participating in order to review the data.
Right, that was just what was submitted to DOR.
Correct.
Got you, okay.
Mr. Chairman, the only reason I bring it up, again, we're not talking about a lot of money. If there's literally no place to find, I'd, whether I agree or disagree, or people have to look harder, that's a different discussion. But I think if the schools are going to go for it, this is when, again, we talk about doing the same things. If the schools weren't involved, I'd have an easier time of backing away from supporting it as much as I do. But again, for one-half the town or sixty percent of the town budget to be easily accessible, completely transparent to the public, and then for us not to be, to me, that doesn't make any sense. So are we going to lose the discount if we don't jump on board before July one?
I think so, yeah.
Because that, obviously, in business, would be the carrot. So as far as I'm concerned, why would we not want to do that, especially? And I asked the question, obviously, I knew the answer, that the schools were moving forward on it. They were impressed about a month ago, and that decision seems to be being made officially very soon. So again, for sixty percent of the town budget to be transparent and easily accessible in a modern, clean look rather than, you know, the alternative, quite honestly, to me, it doesn't make any sense not to do that. Whether, you know, we have to get creative or figure out how we want to do that, I just need to know. I mean, I don't think it's worth losing the discount and, you know...
Agreed. If we're going to do it, this is the time.
Is that a first-year savings or every, is that a three-year?
I believe it's going to honor it every year.
Could you give us that clarity? If it's a twenty percent discount spread out over, or added every three years, that means something to me as well, because Will's right.
The way I understand it, it will, yes.
All right, can you give us that clarity? And then as we structure, it sounds like we're going to lose any potential benefit or cost reduction, I should say, if we just look to implement in FY seventeen. So it'd have to be a Town Meeting article to move salary and wages unless you want to look back at something else.
It could be done, we have the money now, I'm just suggesting that it'll be tight. But it could also be done through the thirty-three B transfers at the end, if that's even...
At the end when?
At the end of the year, like to square up like we always do, you know? So I'm not suggesting that there's none at all, it just wasn't budgeted, and it may make matters tighter.
Yeah, you're running a budget. You get it, I get it.
But it can be done if you want to move forward, we can do that.
Why don't you come forward with a proposal on how we... on how we would fund it if we were going to fund it in this year and take advantage of the costs? Where we would do that? Is it salary and wages, is that something?
No, it would be out of the IT general expense.
You're overspending.
It's just a line item transfer.
You're just pushing that money back.
Just a line item transfer, what do you do?
It could be, it could. It's not over budget now, this won't kick us over budget, it's just.
When would you feel comfortable making the purchase?
If we're going to get the 20% discount, it should be done now, you know?
You've got to coordinate that with the school department if, in fact, that's the pleasure of this board. But I think they might need a motion from us.
Brian, any thoughts?
No, I mean, you know, I mean, if it's beneficial to the town, if, you know, your department thinks that it's something that would be helpful, the town administrator does, if the school department is moving forward on it, then, you know, I think we should coordinate with the school department.
Okay, Rick, do you need a motion this evening or is this something I could wait until January, see how you'd like to structure that?
I'd be comfortable with a motion this evening to move forward. My inclination is that Zach will find what we need to do.
What's the total cost?
That's the pleasure of the board.
One year?
For our side, it'd be $4,800.
$4,800. I just want to make it contingent that it is that discount, that cost is available for three years. Because this isn't a one-year program, this is a, just sticking with it a couple of years.
Mr. Chairman, is it even a three-year contract or is it for the, it's just?
It's a one-year.
A one-year contract?
One-year, year to year. The question is, are they going to offer us that price for three years and that's your understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
So, is there a three-year minimum obligation? So, where does the three years come from then?
It's the price they offer.
If we were to continue, they would continue to honor $4,800 per year. If we choose to renew next year, the following year.
We would have the option, is that correct?
Okay, so that's just a.
I think that puts us in a good frame.
But you don't have to.
Right, right. Okay, so it's just a, the offer that they made, you just arbitrarily pick the three years. Okay.
Okay.
Oh, do you need a motion or?
Yes.
Okay, so I would make a motion to, I'd move to coordinate the purchase of the ClearGov program with the school department.
Seconded.
All right, and that's already at the $4,800. Okay.
Great.
I'd make that unanimous. All right. Anything else? Nice job, Andy. I saw the presentation made to the FinCom. Good job. Looking forward to the, you know, rollout of the capital plan. Not just as it relates to IT, that's the piece of it, you lose sleep over, but there's a bigger piece of it across the town hall. Looking forward to seeing that in mid-January. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Nice work. We've done the town administrator's report. We have nothing under old business, but I'll go to the members of the board. My colleagues, is there anything you'd like to bring up under old business?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Nor do I.
All right. Under new business, we have an application for extension of service, serving hours on New Year's Eve to 2:00 AM. This is from Central Tavern, Alpogetti, and it's a new request, so.
I'll move. Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have Massmanock Rod and Gun, a one-day liquor license, all-alcoholic beverage for a fundraiser on February 25th, '17, and it's from 4:00 to 12:00 PM at the Club Hall.
I'll move. Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor and tell them thank you for putting those requests in early. See some of these come in late?
I made this one.
Okay. Do the members have any new business?
Mr. Chairman, I have one item. I had the pleasure today of being at the Senior Center with Steven P. Tech, Commander of the VFW. And he presented the scholarship awards for the, what they refer to as the Voice of Democracy in Patriots Pen Essay Contest to two young ladies, students at, through the Milford Public Schools. I wonder if we could schedule them in for a subsequent meeting.
That'd be great.
Along with Commander P. Tech and the VFW. We did it last year.
Yeah, no, I remember it. It's a great program, great idea, and I only wish that my work allowed me to go to the program today, but great idea, thank you.
So, I'll get the names. It's Reagan McGrath and Natalie Decuna and their families, so I'll get that information of the town administrator.
Okay.
Next, we have. Let's see. Attorney General OUI data. And we have a few license holders who are identified either accurately or not by the people who received OUI citations. And as his customer at this board, we typically would send a letter of correspondence to that license holder letting them know they were identified as having served the last drink. Next, we have a letter of support request from the town of Hope Dale. And Rick and I had some discussion today and I had an opportunity to speak with one of the members of the board's selectmen. And what I'm thinking is that Rick meet with Mr. Setti, the town administrator of Hope Dale. And I wanted to run this by the board to see what your thoughts are. Very easy opportunity to help support the Route 16, Hope Dale Street. Improvement of that intersection. But I thought it was an opportunity to have broader discussion about where there are other areas that might be mutually beneficial. And I know Mellon Street Bridge is one of those. And I want to be, you know, supportive of each other's needs and possibly have Rick meet with Mr. Setti and see where the that mutual support might come from for state grants, small bridges and road construction where we could put together one comprehensive list that benefit both Hope Dale and Milford. I got the impression that that would be very easy to do and we could still get our letter in on time. I didn't see, I know we're past the date that.
I spoke with Steve. We set up a time that we will meet if that's the pleasure of the board.
That's the pleasure of the board.
But I did speak with him today.
Yeah, I think there are other opportunities to work cooperatively with Hope Dale where we have roads that connect in so many places and traffic that needs to move through. And maybe we could further some discussion on Mellon Street as well as the intersection down there.
Sure. Yeah.
That's great.
All right.
I don't have a problem though.
All right. So, take that as a consensus for the board that whatever that memorandum of understanding and mutual support might be that you draft, that would be great. Outstanding. Next, we've got information regarding Human Resources Director. And, you know, there's something I need to clarify. We had talked, and we had talked in broad terms because it was a board member, and I had brought it up, a board member from the Personnel Board who had talked about asking, he asked for the support of this board to help them move towards a HR position and essentially go out of business, support taking the Personnel Board out of business. There's been subsequent discussion, both from, information provided from Jerry and a subsequent vote by the Personnel Board that communicated to us essentially a shift in that direction, thinking about what Jerry had noted. I think it was my mistake because what I didn't clarify is the scope of responsibilities for what an HR department might do. And I know Rick had already done the benchmarking for some local communities on what HR department might do. I think the scope of Jerry's memo answered our question as narrowly as I had asked the question, right? He answered the question in the context I asked it. And it had to do with Personnel Board only. Rick had compiled some information, looking at benchmarks from other communities of what HR departments do when they get to the size and scope of what Milford is, Milford has in front of them. He's provided a memo that brings together, kind of aggregates the different, or the, where the overlap is from the various documents you received. Some of your benchmark information that you've provided is interesting, Rick, in that all of it's interesting. But the most interesting piece I found is, I know there's 341 towns, cities and towns across the Commonwealth, but there's a fair number here that have gone to HR positions. Amherst, Andover, Belmont, Burlington, Danvers, I can go on, and Franklin, Lexington, some very close to us, Natick, Woburn. And in any event, Rick, I wonder if you could go over that memo because I wanted to talk a little bit more about whether now is the time or not. Go over what HR positions do in the municipality and what you could gather as kind of like a general theme.
Yeah, the memo that, what I did is I compared a number of the job descriptions from various towns and/or advertisements looking for an HR person. And there are, you know, some obvious common themes. One, compliance with federal, state and local government laws, obviously employee benefits, anything to do with a grievance procedure or mediation involving employees or communication with employees. They conduct performance evaluations, they do training, both on their own, but also getting outside resources to come in to do training. They do do job design, classification. They do do advisement and what they call coaching of department heads and others on appropriate and accepted personnel practices. And then anything involving some type of claim, whether it be harassment, discrimination or some other conduct. Those are some of the, well, those are, I think, all of the common themes. Of all of them, that would be done through an HR person and/or department.
And then the, since this is correspondence, I just wanted to discuss the correspondence and not whether or not the board should consider or not consider HR. I think we're in the fact-finding phase. I think Jerry got the question that I asked, but not entirely of the scope of the type of work. Because, Rick, this is the type of work and I think this is the type of discussion that the board of selectmen should be having. And so, let me just go back over these because I think it's important that we dig into what these mean. By the way, I'd add a couple for the benefit of the board members. There are also HR positions within this information packet we received that handle worker compensation claims. And there are also HR positions that do wage studies. And wage studies more frequently, I think, than what we might be doing now every 10 or 12 years. But I did want to go back to some of the bullets that were on the page. So, when we talk about ensure compliance with federal, state and local laws, you know, we have an obligation, you know, they're posted on our walls. So that everybody can read them, employees can read them, employers can read them, managers and department heads can read them. About where we have obligations to comply with state and federal law. That has to do with aspects of sexual harassment training. State law might include compliance with ethics training. And nowhere is that anybody's responsibility. Rick, give me your best guess. When do you think sexual harassment training was last conducted here? I know we've talked about it, so I'm not surprising you.
Yeah, it hasn't. I mean, I'm not going to comment prior to my.
Yeah, yeah.
Tenure, which is almost four years.
You've not seen it rolled out.
Which is almost four years.
So, we're not in compliance. HR departments typically ensure that we're in compliance with making sure that employees know their rights, are clear about their rights beyond what's posted on the wall and they're giving a little bit greater in-depth training. We also, that HR person would also make sure that we have record of that training so that if we were to have to defend ourselves in suit, that we could do that with the ability and the audited ability to say, this is what we do, this is how we do it and this is how frequently we provide that training. It's a benefit, I don't want to just talk about liability, but I want to talk about the actual benefit that as people go through the training, they're refreshed on the types of things that are good and appropriate work discussions and what are not, which should be outside of the work environment or not discussed with employees at all. And I'm not sure that people have a clear understanding of that. With respect to our compliance and at least the compliance of this board, boards under our purview and employees under our purview, this board couldn't talk with any depth at all about the extent to which we comply with ethics training. We may or may not be able to get our hands on those documents, as an example, and I think we can do better. These are some of the reasons that I've talked about HR. Right now, there are, there is a lot of this work, I don't want to say that it's not being done because I don't want to even give that impression. There's a lot of this work that is being done, it's being done by department heads where it's not their skill set. Workers' compensation claims. The reason why some of our job descriptions are not updated periodically because it's not somebody's job to go back and do that. Department heads don't always do that work, sometimes they do. And I think pulling together that work may make sense. But what I wanted the board to see is what other towns are using HR professionals for. It's far beyond anything that would be Personnel Board today. And it's what, it's what, in my opinion, is representative of a $100 million corporation and a corporation like the town of Milford, if you want to think of it sometimes as a business, it's not, but who has 600-plus employees and a lot of responsibilities to those employees and department heads. We've run into a few situations here and I don't want to get into any depth in it, but where department heads who are appointed or elected who may not have the experience with managing employees and that training goes a long way to helping them. And that coaching from an HR professional goes a long way in catching things early and coaching both employees and department heads. And for me, it's not a position that's restricted to the 40-plus people under the charge of Personnel Board, but it's something that could be used broader, town-wide. It can be used within Town Hall. And it's not prohibited from being involved in monitoring, training, responsibilities, compliance with federal and state laws for union or non-union employees. So, I just wanted to, and I need to get back to Jerry because obviously this is much different than what the Personnel Board is doing today. So, I wanted to say that. I know I spoke for a long time, but I wanted to see if there are any thoughts about the correspondence that exists out there. Brian, I'll go to you, any?
Well, you know, I prefer probably not to get into the merits of an HR department or not at this particular point. Especially where we have people waiting for executive session, so. You know, I understand the correspondence, I understand the job descriptions. I think the majority, if not all of them provided, are not relevant. They all talk about town managers, they talk about a different centralized type of government which we don't have in Milford. So, I don't necessarily agree with the concept of the HR director, but, you know, as you said, it's not really on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't really want to get into the pluses or minuses of it.
No, I was asking, I realized I was asking to see if there's anything you might, anything else you might want to say before we put it on as an agenda item to discuss and finally clear the deck of the discussion or not?
No, I mean, you know, I don't know if this list from the MMPA is complete or if it's just a snapshot of some of the towns. I don't know exactly how that works.
Those who have responded to the.
Okay, so that's the.
For the information.
As far as the MMPS.
It's not all-inclusive.
Okay, but that's the universe of the information that they have.
Correct.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, at some point, if you want to place that on as their agenda item, I feel pretty comfortable with the level of information that we have right now.
Okay. Will?
Yeah, no, I'll echo the same. I think we, I think Rick obtained as much information as he could based on getting respondents. And I know there are certain towns on those lists that, there are a couple of towns that I know for a fact missing because I happen to know the HR. because I happen to know the HR directors in a number of towns because of past work. But if they don't respond, they don't respond.
Correct.
So I think this is ample. This is, this answers a lot of the questions that I've had. I think it's at least worth the value of having the discussion as an agenda item in the future, and I look forward to that.
Okay, yeah, let's do that. We keep talking about meetings in January. We've got to fill up that. We've got capital. We've got a lot of things happening to create budgets and, but let's put it on there because I think our folks and yourself are entitled to hear that discussion and hear any disposition that might come out of that. All right. With that said, is there any other items of correspondence that the members received that they would like to talk about this evening?
I don't have any, no.
Not hearing any. I'll accept a motion to adjourn to go to executive session?
I'll move. Seconded.
I'll vote in favor. That's unanimous. I'll go to roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll also vote the affirmative. That's unanimous. This board's business has concluded this evening. We will not be returning from executive session. And the purpose of executive session is specifically to meet with town council, to go over and get an update regarding the potential acquisition of Milford Water Company.